Thanks for noticing. Handcrafted Barber Studio?
Solani Clips dot com.
Oh, no.
Handcrafted for the win.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Good morning, everyone. It's 7:00 AM September 15th, 2021. We'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. We have a quorum. First item of business discussion this morning is a discussion on the technology at the Bigwood Event Center. We'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Your Honor, council members. Thank you. We are asking you to approve this as a resolution this morning rather than kick it to the council, and I'll explain why here in just a second. I'm going to do a high-level overview, and then we have Mike with Tierney here and Doug Carl with LHR on the computer who are more of the experts, subject matter experts, and the users. So I would like them to kind of fill in the blanks. But as you all may know, the existing technology at the Bigwood Event Center is original to the building, so now 21 years old. And as we look to reopen, refresh, rebrand, and reboot that facility in January of next year, with that comes a refresh of the technology and the ability to host meetings of 2022 and beyond. So we've been working closely with LHR and Tierney to identify the appropriate technology for these spaces. They'll get into more details, but new screens, cameras, microphones, all of, you know, the whole works. It's really a state-of-the-art system that will allow for remote capabilities, anything and everything potential users want to do with that space. As you saw in the proposal within your packet, there is a pretty big sticker shot there. It's a big number, but it's a very significant overhaul of the system, and it's very state-of-the-art technology. So we're looking at a cost of $327,606.40 if we were to move forward with the proposal today as presented. We're asking the council to approve this this morning simply because of the supply chain, material order problem that everybody's facing. Again, we have the goal of completing this by January 1st and getting it open. We're looking at a minimum of 12 weeks. As soon as we give Tierney the green light and they order these materials, then we have a few-week installation process, which is going to push us right up to the end of the year. So I figured the five days between now and the council meeting may save us at the end, and I think that's very vital, as we have people scheduling events for that first week of January and not wanting to have to disturb that right away. So that's what we're looking at doing. We're proposing as a tax levy that we use these funds out of the ARPA, which is the American Recovery Plan Act, which is the federal, the second round of federal COVID dollars that the city has received after the CARES funding. And maybe I'll give Bill just 30 seconds to talk about the ARPA funds and where we're going with that. But the resolution, if the council's on board with moving forward today, that I'm looking for would be to approve the proposal and also authorize us to utilize the ARPA funds for this purpose. So Bill can speak more to that, and then we'll turn it over to Mike.
Sure. Thank you, Andrew. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. The city has received our first payment of ARPA funds of $729,820. We'll get the second payment next July in 2022. So between $1.4 and $1.5 million of those ARPA funds. I provided you a list of things we've talked about using those for. The first one being the mobile stage, talked about quite some time ago. We will want a resolution from the council at some time here to approve that $117,313 use of that. Then you can see the Bigwood Center technology of $328,000, $10,000 for the AC unit that would go in the technology room at the Bigwood Center for this technology system. The Bigwood management fee, $180,000. That's the $60,000 over three years to help get us back up to a profitable facility, because, you know, it was shut down because of COVID. And then we have a couple water and sewer projects that are potentials in here. And these numbers, you know, probably aren't even correct anymore, but it's what we knew at the time when we put this together. The Downtown Riverfront Project, $245,000, and then $440 for International Drive Water and Sewer. That's the one very preliminary number there that I think may actually be more than that. But if we were to use it in this fashion, total uses of 1.3, still leaving about $140,000 remaining. So that's just a quick summary of that.
Thanks, Bill. Just one question. I know when I first saw this number, as I'm sure other council members, 327,000, as Andrew mentioned, is a large number. But it's also to get, like he said, our facility up to state-of-the-art. But I was, my question to you is, talk about, this is not just a simple, single contract. This is on the state's bid contract. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. This would be from the state contract. So the state goes out and does the bidding for cities, so we can participate in that and just go to the state contract and purchase off of that, because it's already been bid. They have met the bidding requirements.
So we can have assurance with that high number that it's not simply just one contract, as if we were going to go out to bid? And is it a timing thing, the reason we're not going out to bid and taking the state contract?
Right. It would take longer. And we typically, we are required to go to the state contract and check those prices first as well. We often do that, you know, for our equipment fleet as well. If you're going to buy a new dump truck or a grader or something like that, we often go to the state contract as well.
So we have assurance that this is the cost of what this technology is, you know, is going to be, if we're going to do this with the facility. Okay, thank you, Bill. So with that, we will turn it over.
Is it possible to ask, on the, on the American Rescue Plan Act, then, I mean, what is the defined uses of that money?
Very good question. So the defined uses for ARPA, certainly anything dealing with fighting the pandemic for COVID, as, you know, anything, basically, we were using the CARES funding before, so certainly technology falls into that. We did a lot of that here in City Hall with getting people to be able to work remotely, meet remotely. Thus, the Bigwood Center, this would qualify because we're making that a state-of-an-art, state-of-the-art conference facility where you could have in-person as well as remote, like zooming in meetings, things like that for streaming. So that's certainly anything fighting COVID, technology-related, dealing with the pandemic. Also then, infrastructure, water and sewer and broadband are the three infrastructure. I know oftentimes, streets comes up. That's not an allowable use of ARPA funds, but for infrastructure, it's water and sewer and broadband.
And just a reminder, since we've always owned the Bigwood facility, so the upgrades, the capital, this would be considered a capital improvement to the facility, which we would have been responsible for regardless of whether we were going to take ownership or not.
Correct. Just like if we, we replace the carpet and we reface the walls, some of the, the wood veneers up above, all that was done out of the Bigwood Center funds that we have.
This is the first significant technology upgrade in 20 years, and I think we all know what's happened to technology in the last.
The existing system, we did have a local contractor go through that, look at that. Basically, it is at the end of its useful life. In fact, when Otter Tail County used the facility in the last year now, we had to bring in our new system from our mobile stage that we purchased to use in the Bigwood Center. So we did bring in a portable system to bridge that gap.
Thanks, Bill. Well, we have Mike Chapley with us from Attorney. Is that correct?
Tierney.
Thanks, Mike. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, council members. So I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have on, on the system. If it is your preference, I can kind of give a 10,000-foot overview as well, if that's.
Yeah, please do.
So the system that we're proposing is going to be similar to kind of what we have here, but on a much larger scale. So we're updating all the visuals within the space, audio within the space, control, a new state-of-the-art solution out there. So the main event space is a traditional divide combined. So we're planning on putting in new projectors and new screens in each of the spaces that will have the ability to display content in any fashion. We're updating the audio into a zoned audio solution. So putting in new speakers throughout, both in the event space as well as in your pre-function and lobby space. So if you needed to do an announcement, hey, five minutes before this event starts, you'll be able to do that. We have a wireless microphone solution going in throughout the space as well as replacing the audio jacks that are at the walls currently in the space. So you guys would be able to still bring in that staging equipment if you wanted to do more of an ad hoc, hard-wired type of, any council-type meeting or Q and A session. So you have an expandable mic solution within the space. And then we do have, similar to what you have here, from a camera solution, a few PTZ cameras. So if anybody wanted to rent the space and run a Zoom meeting, a Teams meeting, whatever that web conference call might be, they'd have that flexibility. It does have streaming capabilities, similar to what you're doing here, stream to YouTube, Facebook channel, whatever you might want to push to. The nice thing with this solution and the space that it's going into is you could create potentially packages, AV packages for rental. So when someone is coming in and renting that space out, you can say, hey, which rooms do you want? What are your needs? It'll cost X amount of dollars to use this, this equipment in this space if you wanted to do this type of meeting. So we're providing all the installation for it, programming, configuration, training, and, and all the equipment. As it was mentioned, we're, we're on the state contract, so everything that's being priced out is relatively transparent as far as you can see what our costs are, what your costs are. We've been on the, the contract there for 15 or 20 years, I want to say.
And a 20-year warranty, right?
So we do have our standard one-year premium warranty for all the equipment. The equipment is covered under the manufacturer warranty. So with that, the two kind of go hand in hand. If there are any equipment issues, you guys would have, I have Tierney that you guys could reach out to and say, hey, our projector's broken or not working. We would handle any return processes or have technicians come out and maybe fix whatever issue it is, if it's, the bulb is out or, or whatever it might be. So.
Thanks, Mike. Council have questions for Mike? No? Andrew?
Yeah, then, Your Honor, we have Doug Carl on the Zoom meeting who is with LHR, and maybe he can just talk, you know, as a, as a user of facilities like this, how this technology, you know, how he views this proposed technology as useful for the event center or the appropriate package for the event center.
Sure. Thanks, Andrew. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning. Morning. Yeah, I'll do, I'll speak to the, you know, the end-user experience. And, you know, we've done technology installs on new builds as well as renovations, you know, for 15 years. Our most recent one was just a few years ago on a $24 million facility in Minneapolis. And for, you know, what the capabilities are with this proposed system, the ability to, you know, have, you know, multiple rooms running concert as well as being able to break out individual rooms, looking at it from the meeting planner standpoint of, you know, how difficult is it for a meeting planner to be able to utilize the technology with, you know, staff's help is a consideration as well. And, you know, as we went through these, these different areas, this system that's being proposed does hit all of those, all of those items. And so it is, it is a good system. You know, I think one of the interesting things about technology is it always amazes me the price tag. And, you know, and that can be, that can be something that can cause people to hesitate. But the reality is, for what's not only put together from a technology standpoint, but the ability, you know, running the cabling and the wiring and interfacing with the wireless, it's a, it's a very complicated process for the, you know, the company that's installing it to, to put together with the goal being the end user. It's a very simple process. I'm open to any questions that council has. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Any questions for the council?
I suppose the one, the one question is, technology moves so fast, and obviously we put the system in today. And then, you know, how flexible is this system from an upgrade point of view, young, down the, down the road? Just, just because it literally moves so, so quickly, you know, from a component piece point of view, can, is it flexible enough to interchange pieces?
Yes and no. So we're using, we're using state-of-the-art equipment as far as what's at the forefront of what's available to us. I don't know what's going to happen in five years, what they're going to come out with, if now all of a sudden people are requesting holograms and things like that in your space. But the, the, the system will be flexible enough to expand, should you need to add additional cameras, microphones, video inputs or outputs. We do have that flexibility. And then there are certain components that will have upgrade schedules, similar to kind of what you have in here. There are certain items that you might say, hey, let's get a new projector because this one's not bright enough anymore, or whatever it may be. So I don't know if that fully answers your question.
Yeah. I think the capability to expand it is important.
Any other questions? Would someone like to offer a resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Caroline. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Andrew and Bill.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the preliminary discussion on the 2022 budget and levy, and we'll call on our finance director, Bill Morning. Bill Sonmore. Bill Morning. He's a morning person.
Good morning. Lynn will pull up our presentation here. So we've been working on this budget. Started last May. I'm kind of a broken record. We kind of run the same schedule every year. So we kind of start in May, work through the summer. Come to September, we, we need to have a proposed preliminary levy to Otter Tail County by September 30th. So that's, that's our goal. I do not need action from you today. We will ask for that on Monday at the council meeting so that we can get that preliminary levy to Otter Tail County by the end of the month. One thing we always like to remind you, we can always go down from here to the December meeting, but we cannot increase our levy beyond today. So today is the max. So that kind of tells us that calendar that I just talked through. December 6th, we will be having the public meeting and open for comments at 6:00 PM or later that night. So just kind of gave you that quick update there. Some assumptions that we worked with, we work with our utility companies, the League of Minnesota Cities, to find out what should we be budgeting for next year. So we get those from external sources. You can see the percentages that were built in the budget. Total proposed revenues of $44,633,281. Total expenditures, $43,121,792. We have a proposed tax levy of $7,58,500. That is an increase of $453,716, or 6.87%. So that's the number where we could always decrease it, but we can't increase it beyond that, beyond today. And then our tax capacity rate, we have a current rate of 55.998%. We would estimate that to be at 58.944, and that would be a 5.26% increase. So that increase is a little bit less because of growth in value that we see in the city. That may change a little bit by December, but this should be reasonably close, even when we get to December. And I work with the county auditor to get that number for you. So this just breaks down that budget between the different fund types. We have our general funds, special revenues, debt service, capital project, enterprise, internal service. So coming down to our totals there. This pie chart just shows where our revenue comes from. And charges and sales are certainly the largest revenue source for the city. Keep in mind, this is the city as a whole. So that includes all our enterprise funds, the liquor store, water, sewer, storm, the refuse business, all those charges coming in. But you can see property taxes, and then at 16%, and intergovernmental at 20%. Intergovernmental includes our, our federal and state grants that we receive. Local government aid is in that number. We have some transfers that happen between funds of the city as well. And then our expenditures, you can see wages, benefits, health insurance, that's about 30% of our budget. Again, we're a people organization that provides services to the residents, so certainly a big part of the budget. The capital outlay over on the left at 18%, that's our projects we do. That number can fluctuate from year to year depending on what projects are in the budget. It can have some big swings. So otherwise, you can see the other different slices of the pie where, where the money is used. So back to that proposed levy, looking at $7,58,500. Our 2021 levy was $6,604,784. And I want to point out, recall, we did not change that levy for 2021. So you, as a city council, because of what was happening in the world with COVID-19, chose to do a zero change to that levy from '20 to '21. Of course, we see expenses continue to rise, just like everyone does. So when you skip a year of no increases, it, it hits a little harder than the following year. This chart we've had in each year just explains the process about, you start with the Otter Tail County assessor determining the market values for a home. You apply the state class rates to that. You establish the tax capacity. Then you, as a council, establish the property tax levy at a dollar amount. There's always often confusion in the public about that, but we set a, a dollar amount, so $7,58,500. We ask Otter Tail County, go spread that over the city and collect that, and then forward those funds to us. And that's what they do. So you take that, divide that into that tax capacity, you get your rate. You apply that rate then to the individual property to calculate the individual tax bill. This just shows where levy and rates have been and are going from 2019 through 2022. You can see the levy being held stable there from '20 to '21, and then our increase for '22. Now, the other line has, you know, looks like big changes, but realize the rates on the side are in percentage. So, you know, small changes in that looks a little bigger on this graph since we've combined them with the levy in the millions of dollars on the left. This just then shows impacts and what those taxes would be on a $125,000 home. Now, of course, keep in mind, as you look at this, home values are going up as well. But we show this here of what it would be for those values. So, you know, when you look from '19, '20, '21, '22, it's all at the same value there. So of course, an individual homeowner, you would see those changes with growth in market value as well. And we will have more information for the December hearing, where we'll have the other taxing jurisdictions' rates in there as well. So they're to be determined at this time. So taxes and state aid, just to recap, we did no levy increase for 2021. You, as a council, held that stable. We did assume a 20% reduction in local government aid for 2021. The reason I put that in there is we like to tell what's changing in the budget. So that was our assumptions for 2021. Now for '22, I'd like to remind people that property tax and state aids, they are the main funding sources for government funds of the city. Basically, two main sources. All those other charges we talk about, refuse, sewer, water, those are all for our enterprise funds that run like a private business. So for governmental funds, your general fund, your library, your port authority, it is mainly taxes and state aids. We talked about how we experienced inflationary increases. Therefore, the property tax levy needs to increase to that $7,58,500. Local government aid being another major funding source for us is going up $8,463, or 0.22%. So with that being a main funding source, when we don't see big changes there, then the changes roll over to our property tax levy that is the other main source. This just shows the chart of the history of local government aid. Just like to give you a little perspective on that. So the general fund in particular, we just talked about that. What's changing in the general fund? LGA, we are bringing back to our certified level. We had thought, you know, 20% decrease, thankfully did not materialize in 2021. We had an LCCMR grant in the budget for the dairy this year. That should be closed by the end of the year, hopefully. We were going to use fund balance in 2021 of $300,000 and transfer an extra $200,000 from the liquor store. We are not having to do that because LGA was not cut. And then we used some bond proceeds from 2020, purchased a fire truck in 2021. That is then not in the budget in 2022 because that project is done. So we're bringing our liquor store transfers back to the normal level of $607,000. We are using some fund balance. We've talked about the Bigwood Center, getting that back up to a profitable facility over, you know, four years. So the first year, we need to infuse some funds for operations of $107,000 is what is projected that would be coming. The comprehensive plan in the planning department of $75,000. And then a new calendar and email system, the one-time charges here of $30,000, looking at pulling from our fund balance, because it's a one-time charge for any of these. But then the operating side of that goes into the operating budget because we don't want to live on our savings account. But you can use that for some one-time charges is what we've built in. General government, we do have an election in 2022, so that's back in the budget. We're doing some technology updates, as we talked about, the comp plan we talked about. And then we are keeping capital outlay in our general government buildings area to help take care of our governmental-supported buildings. Public safety, the police department budget at just over $4 million, and trying to restore some funding back to the 2019 levels. And then the fire department, a decrease of $483,000, so at $825,611. Again, we talked about that fire engine that was purchased. And then they are also continuing to fund capital outlays, so we have money for, you know, saving for the future for that next truck or some station repairs that need to be done. Streets and highways, the tax levy committee is, feels strong about our need for putting money into streets. So putting a 10% increase to our annual maintenance dollars, so that is for the seal coats and overlays. So that's $37,440, bringing the total to $411,840 for 2022. Again, felt strongly about, let's get some increase again in there for streets. And then street lighting, we have contracted with Otter Tail Power to replace the street lights throughout the city. Phase one and two are complete and operational. Just at a recent meeting, you approved getting the street lights put into the downtown project and finishing a little bit on Vernon. So that'll kind of bring us through phase two. That is in the budget to, of course, pay for that. And then we will look to franchise fees to do an analysis and bring this back to you later this fall because we have phase three of a street lighting project to look at, and that would complete this city in its entirety. So franchise fees could help pay for that, as well as then franchise fees to help with our street infrastructure, infuse more dollars into the actual street pavement. Now, franchise fees, they're a pass-through charge that would be added to, like an electric and natural gas bill, pass through to the city. Now, it's a very viable, you know, funding option for street infrastructure and street lighting. A benefit of that is that it spreads those costs across the city, even to tax-exempt properties that are not paying property taxes right now, would then pay that franchise fee, get that money into, you know, the roads and the lighting as well. So that's kind of the, the goal of that one. Again, us as staff, we'll put that together and bring that back to you later this fall. Parks and Rec, that budget dropped about $1 million. That is the dairy, the LCCMR parcel, the buffer along the river. That's the purchase that's going to happen. The general fund is going to purchase that from the Port Authority, get that done yet this year. That was funded through LCCMR grant of $600,000 and use of fund balance of $400,000. Closing should happen yet this year. We're waiting on some stuff from the DNR to get there. The Downtown Riverfront Project, that is under construction. We have a new levy in for those bonds of $113,000. That's included within this levy that's proposed to you today. Economic and community development, funding greater Fergus Falls at $50,000. We have a new tax abatement levy of $26,500 for the housing rebate program that was. program that was implemented. And as of June, we had thirty-four homes in that program. And lodging tax collections, we're restoring to the 2019 level. Of course, that was down in 2020, coming back in 2021. So good news there that we're seeing that bounce back. Port Authority, holding their levy at sixty thousand dollars, so no change there. They're continuing to operate the CBHH facility and collecting rent from the state, collecting rent from Lakes Country Service Co-op to pay the bonds for the Level Four Education Facility. They're working on selling industrial park property and looking to develop, more development in our industrial parks. The Port Authority, this is also an important point to note. Our levies would be starting for the dairy bonds. That is the demo loan and the revolving loan fund through DED. The Port Authority has agreed to make the first payments on those, so that is there. The demo loan, seventy-nine thousand two twenty, and then thirty-four thousand six fifteen for the cleanup revolving loans. So that would have been a levy increase. Actually, this would have been a hundred and five percent of this number would have been in the levy had the Port Authority not been using some of the land sale cash that they received. And look at our time. I know we're pressing for time today. Public Library showing their total budget, showing they're mainly funded by tax levy and regional library aid. Gail applied for and is receiving a Big Read's grant for eleven thousand eight thirteen. And again, she is restoring expenditures to the 2019 levels. The Big Wood Event Center, we just talked about that, so I probably won't go into much on this slide. We covered that in the first item, and we've talked about how we're going to make some transfers and use ARPA funds there to get that facility back up to, you know, flight level for that one. Capital improvements, this number will probably change by December. We may adjust some of these projects, but as of the time of putting this slide together, we have, you know, streets of over two million dollars. Lincoln Avenue, or Union Avenue, Lincoln to Fur being a big one and being, Brian, that's pretty much all state funding. Is there some federal funding in that, too?
Yeah, eighty percent federal funds.
Okay, eighty percent federal, the balance state, so big street project there for next year. RTC Preservation Project, we have grant funds remaining of about one point seven million dollars. We're going to come back to you in October, I believe it is, to talk about the next steps. Where do you, as a council, want to go with using those funds on that facility in the coming year? And then infrastructure, we have the east block to do of the Downtown Riverfront. NP Park will be going. They're busy raising funds for that. The funds are coming in great as well. We've committed two hundred thousand dollars from the liquor store towards that five hundred thousand dollars, and then some work at Hannah Park and a stormwater pond at the golf course. These next slides are of the enterprise funds, and I'll just breeze through those. We are going to come back with a utility rate study for the, for the utility funds this fall as well. We've built in some, you know, increases in revenues and expenditures, but we will dial that in and come back to you with that. But liquor store, 2020 was an anomaly with bars and restaurants closed, the liquor store, huge sales, you know, they were very busy doing record numbers of sales. We have seen that come back to normal levels now in 2021, so we're budgeting kind of back to normal levels for 2022. The refuse fund, we actually saw when everyone was staying home, they must have been doing a lot of cleaning out at home because we saw increased use of the landfill as well. So we saw an increase there for 2020. Again, we kind of coming back to normal levels for 2021 and 2022. Sewer Fund, I'll say for sewer, water, storm, and refuse, we did no utility rate increases in 2021 as well, just with the impacts of COVID. If you'll recall, you, as a city council, said, no, let's hold those rates stable as well, just trying to hold everything in. So we'll bring back studies for the sewer fund, the water fund here, and the stormwater as well, all those businesses running profitable, and we need them to be profitable, so we're putting money aside to, you know, do repairs at water plants, sewer plants in the infrastructure out in the streets. Our Equipment Fund is our internal service fund where it's our fleet of vehicles, and we are building in a three percent increase in those internal rates to fund equipment purchases. We are seeing inflationary increases pretty high in equipment purchases, so in an effort to not fall behind on that. Next steps, this is your last slide. So we're going to come on Monday, and we do ask for your action to adopt the preliminary levy and budget so we can get that to Otter Tail County by September 30th. The tax levy will continue to work on this budget until December. We'll bring back the franchise fee review and the utility rate review. And then on December 6th, at 6:00 PM or later, we'll hold that public meeting where the public can then weigh in and make comments as well, and we'll ask you to adopt the final levy and budget then on that night. And that's it.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Sandy, and the Tax Levy Committee for putting that together, Caroline and Andrew. And y'all have access to the copy of the full budget as well. So I guess we'll bring this up on Monday night. We won't go through the entire presentation, but we will have an opportunity for the council to ask any questions, any detailed questions about the budget before we look at adopting the preliminary.
Yep, and that document Ben is holding up there, that has more detail than what you see in the slides, and we will get this stuff up on our city website as well.
Yep, it's available to the public, City Hall, or on the website, so look forward to feeling any questions from the council more in depth on Monday night. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Sandy. Next up is the Campus View Estates Vacation Petition. We'll hear from our city engineer, Brian Uval.
Good morning, Your Honor, and members of the council. Yes, just recently, we received a vacation petition for the plat shown before you. This is a campus edition plat. Just for memory here, did we just recently, this was a replat of this campus edition that was recently approved. We're generally just doing some house cleaning right now for this old plat. This original campus edition was recorded in June 2018. It consists of Block One, lots one through thirteen, Block Two, lots one through eleven, Block Three, lots one through ten, and out Lot B. The new owner has, is requesting application of all usements as illustrated on the attached, which was exhibited here in the highlighted proportions. So it's acceptable. I'm going to be requesting me to hold a public hearing, ten-leaf schedule for October 18th, 2021, in these chambers, starting at 5:30 PM. Once, if that's acceptable, we'll be sending out a notice to all abutting properties and public utility companies. Once comments we hold a public hearing, the city council will decide on if we want to proceed with application. If so, in accordance, we'll be prepared, and it'll be a first reading, second reading, followed by a fifteen-day publication of paper to complete the process prior to recording. There is a fee that has been received by the owner, so at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting to accept the Campus View, excuse me, Campus Edition Vacation Petition and set the public hearing date for October 18th, 2021.
Thank you, Brian. And what we can do is we'll send this to the council for acceptance of that and setting the date, but we can do that by motion this morning. Someone like to offer that? Thank you, Brent.
Second.
Second, Krista, thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries, and we'll see that on the agenda on Monday evening. Brian also going to talk to us about Public Improvement 9348, the airport fuel management system replacement.
Thank you. Yes, just recently, myself and staff met with the Federal FAA and Mid-Nautic Aeronautics to review the airports, Fergus Falls Municipal Airport Five Year Capital Improvement Plan. Currently on our plan, and it was prioritized just last year, but the airport's fuel farm was identified as a significant need and essential to operations. Therefore, we prioritize it on the capital improvement plan at six hundred thousand dollars. I laid some history down based on available records and the age of this facility. We have had some significant repairs, not in to the monitoring system as long as, as well as the pumps, but the, in general, the entire system is nearing the end of its useful life. So from this meeting with the FAA, we determined that, we talked about funding sources and applicability, we could use it in entitlement dollars or state grants. And the FAA, per their guidance documents and their requirements, they will not fund this project because it is a replacement, it's not enhancement. Therefore, it's only applicable for state aid funding. In past history, we found maybe the state will fund up to seventy-five percent in some scenarios, but that hasn't been discussed up until recently. The state had sent me this attached letter that included in the packet. They're willing to encumber six hundred thousand dollars, which is actually a hundred percent, shown on our capital improvement plan to replace the fuel system, JDA and a hundred low lead. So if acceptable, I'm requesting authorization to submit a grant request letter and work with our airport consultant, SCH, about preparing a scope of work and professional services agreement. Preliminary discussions about this system is, number one, we've talked about, we want this system currently subsurface, we want it above-ground system, but there's more discussions to be had about this. Like mentioned, this is just general staff time to proceed with this work, so at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting to initiate Public Improvement 9348, Airport Fuel System Replacement, and authorization to submit a grant request letter to amend up for state fiscal year 2022, and I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brian. Just a quick question. So the six hundred thousand that the state is offering as part of this project would meet the engineer's estimates for the project. Is there a, but is there a certain percentage that's capped of, what I mean, does that six hundred have to represent ninety percent of the project, or can it not exceed eighty percent, or?
Yes, Your Honor, no, they're, what we have under CEP, I mentioned, is a hundred percent funding. Those are based on the budgetary numbers. If there is any increase, we'll be having those discussions with the state to see if they're willing to encumber more and obviously come back to council for future action.
I get it. So their, their, their.
Right now, it's set at a hundred percent.
Intended at a hundred percent. I get it. Okay, I misunderstood that. All right, would someone like to offer?
I love that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions for Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We'll bring that to the council on Monday night. Thank you, Brian. Next on the agenda, we have a facade loan request, and we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, council members. As you are aware, business development for Fergus Falls is the advisory commission that makes recommendations to the council after reviewing loan requests from the public. They recently saw a request from JK Sports, which is a well-known local business. They are requesting twenty-five thousand dollars for facade updates to their building. They've been doing, throughout the pandemic and recently, they've been doing some work to kind of pivot their business a little bit. They're turning more to online sales in certain ways, but that means that they needed to make some changes to the interior of their store and the exterior of their store to be able to house new materials. So they're requesting twenty-five thousand dollars from the facade fund from BDFF. The board got their request, reviewed it, had discussion about it, and is recommending that council agrees to allow JK Sports to borrow twenty-five thousand dollars from the city's revolving loan funds.
Thanks, Clara. And that comes for, as a recommendation from BDFF?
Absolutely. I mean, JK Sports has borrowed money over the course of time, and they've been good for the city, and they've always repaid their loans, so they're in good standing with the city. So I'd make the recommendation.
Thank you, Anthony. That's a motion from Anthony.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second from Justin. All in favor of that motion, if you'd like by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The ayes have it. All right, next on the agenda is the fee schedule discussion, and again, we'll look to Bill Samar.
Okay, you have this in your packet. Those changes are indicated in red, and I will review those for you. So page one, adding a new fee for data requests, twenty-five cents per copy up to a hundred pages after that hundred pages. It's figured at actual cost. This is just to cover our time and the cost that goes into fulfilling data requests. The next one under, the chicken permits down under animals is to require the neighbor's permission. That's just to avoid some after-the-fact complaints for that two-year permit. The same for a fourth dog permit, getting your neighbor's permission first just to avoid problems later. Looking on page two, building moving traffic direction. This would be police department time and raising that fee from sixty-five to seventy-five dollars, and that's again just to cover the time required that gets put in by the police department. Then we go forward to page four. This is under the building department, plumbing permits, residential and commercial. Our base inspection fee, we're just adding clarification of what those fees are for. So for drain, waste, vent, and water line, and then under the RPZ and TVB, this is reduced pressure zone and pressure vacuum breaker fee. So again, just adding clarification to the fee schedule for what those are. Then we jump up to page six. A few more changes here under community development, planning, and zoning. In general, we're taking residential and commercial, combining them into one because we're basically doing the same work, same publishing and whatnot, whether it's a residential permit or a commercial permit. So the conditional use permit, just going with three hundred and fifty dollars. So commercial will get a little break there, going down to three hundred and fifty dollars for that. And we also looked, we're being consistent with other cities when we look at that as well. The after-the-fact conditional use permit, moving that down to seven hundred from seven fifty, the rationale being that we are doubling the fee, so three fifty to seven hundred if it's after the fact. In other words, they didn't take out a permit, and we needed to get after that and get one implemented. Interim use permit, moving that to three fifty, much like the conditional use, again to cover our costs. Preliminary plat, five hundred, again, just one permit here, not differentiating between residential and commercial. And then if we have a separate final plat, then that would be a hundred dollar fee for that. A special planning commission meeting. So if we have to call an additional meeting to deal with something, we have additional publishing costs, that's where that five hundred dollar fee comes in to cover that if it's that additional planning commission meeting. Variance, going to three fifty there, again, combining residential and commercial, and then if we have a zoning amendment map or text, seven hundred dollars. This replaces the five hundred dollar fee you see down on the bottom of the page. And again, this is to cover the increased cost in publishing that we experience. Under revolving loans, this is just pointing in the fee schedule to business development for Fergus Falls, that we know where those are evaluated, putting in the fees then that are, that BDFF has for those programs. Flipping over to page seven, tax increment financing and abatement fees, again, just adding some clarification to work with our community development department on those plans. The fees are not changing. Under engineering, the bottom of page seven, restoration deposits and city right-of-ways. You are seeing some significant increases here, but I want to clarify two things. One, these are deposits, so if the contractor does satisfactory work restoring the area that they would have dug into or whatnot, they get the money back. If not, then we withhold that deposit and the city does that work, and we're increasing it because it's more accurately reflects the cost of what engineering has to deal with and the actual cost for restoring that street or boulevard, be that what it would be. Page eight, fire safety inspection. This is an inspection due to noncompliance, so I want to point out it's dealing with noncompliance, so you have a hundred dollars for the first hour and then fifty dollars for each additional hour. Again, that's to cover our costs, and it's as a result of noncompliance. And flipping forward a few pages, page eleven, the library doing away with the non-Minnesota resident card. So few of that ever happens. It's maybe someone just visiting in town for a little bit, so it doesn't make much sense to be offering them a library card, but then library card replacement just at three dollars, and that's just to cover our cost for that. Parks and Recreation, some clarifications that wanted to be added in here. I want to point out, like, under baseball fields, when we think of our youth programming, when we have a thirty-five dollar per practice, fifty-five dollars per game for baseball or softball, we exclude those charges for our youth programming, so we are not charging those youth, youth programs. When we have tournaments, now, Fergus Falls may or may not be in those tournaments. I'm sure they are often in those tournaments, but, you know, it's a lot of out-of-town coming in for these tournaments. We are not excluding the. We are not excluding the youth programs for those fees, for the tournament fees. So, and changing that to $150 per field per day, and then no exclusions on that, and then, just clarifying how the fields are dragged and lined in here. And again, softball tournaments, just clarifying that as well. On the bottom of page 11, making some changes to our rookie T-ball, the T-ball, the toss, again, increasing those just to cover our costs. It has been several years since we have changed any fees there. Going to page 12, it's the same thing, continuing on there to cover our costs. We are adding the late fee in here of $25 will be added for late registrations, and that's to cover the costs. Often, our park and rec staff then have to start reworking the teams. They can have all these schedules done, then we get some late registrations and have to go back and kind of start over and rework. And if you can think about, parents want, you know, I want my kids in these so that we, you know, coordinate the driving and all of that. That's all understandable, but it does create extra work, an extra fee for that. Adult softball going up to 600, and then a late fee for adult softball as well, to get those payments in here of $25. Kids camp moving from 150 to 175, again, to cover our cost of operating these programs. Under permits and rentals, community garden plots going from $20 per lot to $30. Just to note, we do provide water. We don't do the watering for them, but it is there, so they're able to use the city water on those plots. Mobile stage, as you know, purchased that in this last year, tried to come up with a fair rate because we want it to be used, and we don't want to gouge our local area as well, so trying to find a happy medium of, again, cover our personnel that are working to set up and take down that stage because we do have to do that. We're not going to bring that out and have someone not associated with that stage setting it up or taking it down. We use, you know, a three-quarter ton pickup to pull that around, so we want to cover some of that cost. And then also, setting aside a bit for some maintenance on it. We will, of course, have maintenance on that. So, $500 per day, and then if you were to have a two-day event, that additional day would be 250. Think that's a pretty fair fee. If you were to look at businesses that do this, that rented around the state, theirs is much higher, but they're also in the business of doing it. This, you know, we received a grant from the Vaden Trust for $50,000, and then we're funding the balance from our ARPA funds. So, grant-funded stage, but covering our costs. If there's anything else I want to, was there anything else I was going to say about that? I'm like, okay. Don't, oh, with the mobile stage, at this point, we're recommending that really doesn't go out of town, that that is just going to be used in Fergus Falls. I guess if we receive some requests that made some sense, we'd probably come before you with that, but the goal would be keeping it here, because again, we'd have to send our staff out of town to set it up as well, and we don't want to really be in the business of competing with private business as well, so using it more of an amenity here for the residents of Fergus Falls. The downtown riverfront market structure that is under construction over here, we are looking at a fee, if you want that reserved, of $100 per day plus $100 deposit. Our park shelters are $50 if you want them reserved. And what is our rate for the Pebble Lake picnic shelter? Do you remember?
$150.
Or is it $150?
$150, but that has more kitchen facilities and whatnot, so you can see, we're trying to come in on a happy medium for this structure. We certainly want that used. People will be using it just as you're walking by and whatnot, but if you're going to have an event and want it reserved, then we would ask for this fee, much like we do the other park shelters. Bottom of page 12, under the police department, just clarifying that when we print photos, it's on paper. It's not, they don't come out as, you know, photo prints. And then increasing the rate for photographs on CDs and audio productions on CDs to $5 to cover our costs. Next page, page 13, records data request, 25 cents per page again, just like we saw on our first page. Public Works miscellaneous fees. Equipment fees are determined by the, you know, various equipment that's being used to perform a job, and then you can see our labor hours there as well, and Saturdays and Sundays, because we have to pay more, we have to pass that cost on. So, this is not anything new, we're just getting it on the fee schedule for clarification. We have certainly been billing out personnel and equipment when we are, you know, needing to abate a property or something like that. And page 15, the last one, is a sign review, bringing that actually down to $30, thinking that should cover our costs efficiently. So, that is the summary of the fee schedule, lots of changes this year, but as we kind of review it, it kind of all comes together and makes sense, I think. The goal is, we're just trying to cover our costs on it, so.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody have any questions? I'm acting mayor now, by the way, so buckle up. Anybody have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thanks, Sandy. Lynn has a question. Lynn?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Uh, yes. Sorry, I'm a little rusty.
Oh, I thought you were.
Motion's been offered and seconded. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
You okay with consent agenda on that?
Uh, Justin?
I am.
Okay. Uh, are there any other additional agenda items?
Your Honor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion renewing a previously offered resolution to approve enhancements, 1 through 3, for the downtown riverfront project, and I would like those to be individual resolutions for the entire council on Monday night to consider.
Okay, there's a motion to bring back the three items discussed on the downtown riverfront project at the last meeting, the two Monday nights. May we have a second on that?
A second.
Brent, was that a second? Okay, seconded by Brent.
And maybe just to clarify, like, them listed individually as resolutions.
Listed individually, okay.
Discovered separately.
Okay, thank you. All right. And any other questions, comments, concerns? So, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign.
Aye.
So, five, okay, so the motion carries with some announcements. This Saturday, the 18th, is the Central Lake Cycle Duathlon. Be sure to visit on Facebook and get registered for it. It's the David Grothberg Memorial Duathlon in honor of the Grothberg son, David, who I have the pleasure of serving on the library design committee with, who was tragically killed in a car accident a few years ago. And September 20th, 5:30 PM, city council meeting. September 29th, 7:00 AM, Community Hall, October 4th, 4:00 council work session, RTC funds, followed by another city council meeting at 5:30. So, Andrew Bremseth, city administrator.
Just one last thing, Wasota 100 is in town this week, so I encourage folks to be welcoming and, you know, businesses to provide great service to all of our visitors.
See, on that, when I think about it, I got a phone call last night. Is there a noise ordinance? Because they said that it was racing, or there was car noise at 10:00 at night, and, you know, obviously their children were meant to go to bed to sleep. I don't know, I mean, is there, have we have a noise ordinance in the sense that, you know, like 9:00, we should stop racing or something?
There is. I don't know off the top of my head what the time is. It's later than 9:00.
Right.
I don't know off the top of my head, but there is something. In the past, we've tried to be cooperative with the racetrack, especially for this big race, and we've just asked them to be mindful, you know, knowing they may stretch the limits a little bit, but not 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning. As we work through pre-planning, we just ask them to try to be as efficient as possible, but we're certainly not going to shut them down at 11:00 PM or, you know, 11:30 PM, given all the fans and just how big this event is. But they know our desires to have races run efficiently and try to wrap it up as soon as possible.
And I think maybe last night as well, it was just, you know, the atmospherics were in favor of kind of carrying noise, too.
That, I mean, every night will sound a little bit different, you know, on the weather and the wind, and, yeah, like you said, it's the conditions, and when they're perfect for the town to hear it, we get the calls, otherwise, people don't even hear them. So, it's hit or miss.
And I guess I would just, you know, thank the residents in advance for their patience. You know, this is an event that brings sizable economic boost to our community, you know, which is exactly the kind of thing that we're working on doing more of. So, thank you to our residents for their patience. All right, without any further items, we are adjourned. Thank you all.